At a different level, it's also we're able to use different languages with this. So hopefully here's some voices that we maybe have missed in the past.
So it looks like we have two representatives on our Zoom conference and board members. This Elvis-like microphone is intended to grasp your questions, but I will repeat your questions just to make sure our representatives can hear it. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thanks for having us this evening. My name is Amanda Hill and I'm a county executive at Thought Exchange. And allow me to introduce my colleague Kyle.
Hi there, my name is Kyle Abraham. I'm a high success manager of Thought Exchange in Spirit City, Wisconsin.
I would like to go ahead and share my screen so that you can see some PowerPoint slides. So do please let me know if I can have a thumbs up perhaps, so that you can let me know if you can see those. Excellent, thank you. And to start the presentation, I'm just going to hand over to Kyle.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, so I want to talk to you about what Thought Exchange is. And of course, a part of explaining what Thought Exchange is, is to understand exactly, Jenny gives some great words there, but I think also to talk about how it's different and how we think we set ourselves apart from our competitors and from other people. And so as you can see on the screen, surveys and polls, they're great ways of engaging with people and they're certainly a tool in the engagement tool belt. Surveys and polls, sometimes depending on how they function, they can create polarity, decrease trust, and they can mistake common thoughts for maybe necessarily important ones. And as you can imagine, sometimes you've done a survey or a poll and then you see the results and maybe you feel like that really doesn't resonate with you or you don't really know maybe what a district or an organization is actually going to be able to do with those results. Town halls and forums, they also tend to favor loud voices and ignore that silent majority. You can imagine even in public speaking senses, not everyone likes to do that. And the people who do, do they really represent a large group of people? Sometimes people might have petitions or other ways of verifying that, but sometimes that's a hard thing to necessarily gauge. And so Thought Exchange sits in the middle between the survey and poll sort of space and the town hall and forum space as well. So how does Thought Exchange work? Thought Exchange is mobile-first and mobile-friendly, although it's certainly able, as you can see, you can do it on an iPad or you could do it on your desktop as well. There are three steps to a Thought Exchange. The first step is where you share your thoughts confidentially. So there's a broad, open-ended question and we show you, as the district will set that question, participants will respond to that question. The next step is the star step. So then participants get to see the thoughts of other people in the community without knowing who said what, and then they get to rate those on a scale of one to five. Those ratings and those thoughts, all confidential. From there, there's a discover step where a participant and leadership can view exactly how the conversation is shaking and what thoughts are rising to the top and have the most agreement, which ones have less agreement. And so as a participant and as a leader, you can also see similar results and sort of explore those together. And I think the greatest thing about this sort of avenue and doing things this way is this element of crowdsourcing. There's a lot of wisdom of work around the wisdom of crowds. The idea that sometimes we often lean on experts and expertise in order to make decisions. Sometimes we can balance that out with the fact that crowds are really great spaces for innovation and change, about thinking a little bit differently about things. There are actually, and a lot of that, the idea of wisdom of crowds also creates this culture of trust and transparency. Everyone's seeing sort of how that conversation is unfolding. There, you know, with that being, having less things behind closed doors, means that people are also feel like they're bought into the decision-making process. And even if they don't agree with a decision, they can certainly feel heard in that as well, which ties on the idea of the culture of listening as well. And so we're working with school districts all across Canada and the United States. And the reason why people are liking this idea about crowdsourcing ideas and coming to decision-making as a community is because it certainly inspires trust. It is about that distribution or inclusive element of leadership as well, making sure everyone has a space at the table. There's a really great quote that it's one thing to invite people to a party, but it's another thing to invite them to dance. And so I think that's sort of that element of inclusive leadership certainly fits with that as well. Also, there's an element of prioritize action. That, you know, with the Thought Exchange, you send out a community with people and you can get an actionable list of results depending on what your question is, that you can take in as leadership. You can certainly find that place of action from that list. And I think when you think about exactly that participant experience as well, when people contribute, whether it's your entire community, maybe it's some staff, maybe it's other sections of people, maybe it's even students. When people are contributing to a process, these are the things that you can imagine they can start feeling as they participate and actually see how the results are shaping up. They can feel like there's a sense of belonging, that they're part of a decision-making process. They're not just learning from you, they're learning from each other, which is a really great thing that not all surveys and polls or places are able to necessarily do. And there's that element of being, feeling heard and feeling appreciated as well.
There we are. I still had myself on mute. Thanks, Kyle. And so what does all of that mean? How do we actually apply that within the district? That's the philosophy behind Thought Exchange and this part is about some of the action that you can take. So we have shamelessly taken this from Maslow's hierarchy of needs and we've kind of taken a Thought Exchange hierarchy of needs. And what this is, is meant to represent those things that you do within the district. Down the bottom here, we've got firefighting. And this has to happen before you can move up to the next run. If we have problems about staff retention, parent and community confidence, union issues, morale, things like that, we need to put out those fires before we can start addressing the next level up, which are things like budget, bonds, emergency facility upgrades, board staff changes that we need to find some funds for. And then as we move up again, this is where it starts to get really interesting. This is where we get to the culture cultivation. So what does an ideal school culture look like? What is our portrait of a graduate? What's our advice for new employees? And as we move up again, we have value creation. What's the vision for our future grads? How do we define our event content? How are we creating events that are the best for our students and our staff? What are best practices and strategies that we can implement? And how do we crowdsource the ideas around all of these topics so that we can be implementing feedback from our district and creating best possible next actions that we can create? When it comes to running Thought Exchanges across the district, we tend to think of the participants within three pillars. So you have your community, and that's everybody. That includes your staff, your students, the parents, the community members who have an involvement with the school, the community members who don't. Community is involved in things like your strategic plan, school safety at that higher level, boundary changes, facilities planning, change management, all of those things where you have to hear from everyone's voice. But in addition to that, your staff are another pillar of engagement. And they're a section that it's really nice to start to get their feedback from so that they can be involved in that process of change that Kyle was talking about. And that can then increase staff performance and morale. It develops leadership skills. It engages them with their professional development and it assists in the hiring and onboarding process. Finally, we have our students, who are what we're all here for anyway. You can hear about, from the students on topics that really matter. You can hear about the student experience and you can also develop student leadership skills. So just to drill down into each of those pillars a little bit more, these are some of the questions that other district partners that we work with, that have been asking their community about. What skills or qualities are most important in our graduates? What are your thoughts and questions about our start time, boundary change, facilities? What are some important perspectives for us to consider as we work to provide physical, emotional, and digital safety for students? Imagine crowdsourcing the ideas around questions like these. All of a sudden, instead of trying to come up with what we think might be the best thing for the district, we're able to draw on that collective knowledge and harness the silent majority that often doesn't have the gumption to put their hand up at a community-wide town hall. In terms of that, our staff pillar, what questions are some of our other districts' partners asking them? Well, what are some impactful contributors and ways we could work to reduce school-related stress for our students? What skills, abilities, traits do you want to see in our next principal or teacher type of Ames? Or in reflecting on 2020, what have been our most important areas of success and what do we need to consider to focus on for continued growth? These are just some of the questions that our other partners are using that we wanted to highlight so that you have an idea so you can think how the platform can be applied. And finally, student voice. Student voice is a really innovative area and it's really exciting because you're actually harnessing that collective knowledge of the population that we're here to serve. So as a student, what qualities would you like to see in the next high school principal? What can your school do or change to help you feel more included? Or, I feel motivated to attend school and succeed when? Dot, dot, dot. So those are some of the ways that we can, you can start to implement the platform and we just wanted to share those with you this evening. Do you happen to have any questions for us?
What questions, board members, do you have for Amanda or Kyle?
I have a question regarding implementation and training.
Okay.
What does that look like?
So a question for our staff.
For?
For the trainees with them.
Like what kind of support would they provide?
Did you hear that, Amanda? Did you hear that, Amanda? The question is, what kind of support do you have for implementation and training?
So I'm actually going to hand over to Kyle on this one because he is your client success manager, so this is exactly what he does.
Exactly, that's right. And so with every agreement that we have with any school district across the country, there's unlimited coaching and service that are provided with it. And so that's not the, we intentionally do that, so that's not the limiting factor for anyone. Basically, when, if someone wants to learn how to run an exchange, it takes about an hour for us to work through those things. The nuts and bolts are easy. It's actually the engagement considerations and how you design this in order to set it up for success. Those are the things that are the questions that we like helping people with. And at the end of that hour, if you know what you want to run an exchange on, we'll use that as the example. So the hour is not just about sitting there and watching us fiddle, it's actually you running through the thing, everything, to make sure that you've got what you need to succeed. And so, and that's, again, that's an unlimited amount of service. Even you can come back after that training, of course, and say, actually, I have another idea or I have another thing I want to do. And we can always pull on different school districts that we've worked with in order to provide you some of the best practices that we see.
Do you ever provide a Thought Exchange among the school districts that you have contracts with to, so they can learn from one another on how different districts have used it?
Yeah, and so we definitely have a few different elements that are in play and some that we're working on as well. A lot of, we do actually have virtual events where some of our, the school districts that we work with and partner with come on and they talk about exactly what their experience has been like. And then, of course, we'll use a Thought Exchange to grab thoughts and questions from people and to work in that space. We also have offline events that we do all across the United States as well in those invitations programs, especially if they're local to you, of course, you'd be invited. And usually with every contract, we at least try to get one person from every school district to attend one of those on an annual basis as well. So we do try to, in different facets, try to foster that collaboration piece across districts.
Thanks. Any other questions?
What about non-native English speakers? Do you have translation software for this or how do you handle that?
Great. Yes, and so we've got, yeah, everything defaults to English, of course. And then we also have a Google Translate feature that is available basically for any language that's available via Google Translate. We also do have more intentional functionality for French and Spanish as well. Those tend to be, because in Canada, French is our second language. In the United States, Spanish tends to be more prevalent. And so for those reasons, we have a higher degree of functionality on that. But again, Google Translate can also work for over, I think it's over 100 languages that they have on Google Translate.
Any other questions for Kyle and Amanda? Thank you very much for the information. We appreciate you sharing with us over video over the Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Good evening.
Are there any questions for the staff? We also have Patrick Donovan, our Director of Technology here, that we can also ask questions. I'm assuming, I know you're running the technology, but any questions for district staff on this?
I just wondered who was going to be managing this? So would you, would this be housed in your office or is, would this be in communications?
This will be housed in communications. Very, very easy tool to use and run and not a lot of labor involved with it.
One question I had, first of all, thank you. I know Superintendent Reisner had been looking for a tool like this and thank you for finding this. It looks like it could help with a lot of the things we've talked about. From that presentation, one question I had is, if we approve this tonight, will we be able to get this up and running fast enough that you could potentially use this to get student voice and community voice and staff voice for the high school principal search that's just starting? Because that seems like that would be a great place to use it right away.
We sent out a survey to all of the high school staff, but that was done through Google. The form, we didn't have this yet. But yes, absolutely. My hope is that you would approve it tonight and we would be able to start using it for Thursday's Listen and Learn with PBIS. We spoke with Amanda, well, we spoke with Kyle today and talked with him about if the board approved it, we could have a meeting tomorrow where he helps us set up that platform for the community while it's a Listen and Learn deep dive in PBIS.
And since it's housed in communications, if a building wants to use it, do they have to go through ERIC? Or can they do it in house?
No, you'd want, you want, they recommend that you have it housed somewhere just because then there's kind of a vetting of the questions, making sure that they're appropriate and that type of thing. But we would start first at a district level. If approved, we would want to first really get good at it with our district leaders and then principals could begin using it. And teachers use it in districts across the nation as well. And it's a great tool for grouping students. So in a classroom, grouping by interest or topic. If you are doing a project, here's what I'm interested in and you get to answer and then you go through and you star other ones that you're interested in. And then at the end of the time period, it'll pop up your groups and you would be able to then go to an interest group.
And the contract that is, that comes later, that would be for the licensed usage, so we could use it, anybody could use it.
Unlimited, correct.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, and as we said, it comes back in the consent agenda later on in the meeting. So, thank you very much, Patrick, for getting us set up for that. Are there any comments from the public on Thought Exchange? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to the anonymous alerts update. And I believe, Patrick, you're up for that.
I'm just up here for like three times in a row, so it's okay. So earlier this year, the board approved purchase of anonymous alerts, which is, I'll just give kind of a quick background on it again, is an alerting tool that is placed either on your website or accessible through an app that allows for reporting of incidents. And those incidents are related, we're focusing on safety and security. So bullying, harassment, weapons, assault, any of the stuff like that, including suicidal ideation or threats. But allowing for that stuff to get reported to people inside the district, but also allowing some two-way communication if possible. So this is an anonymous tool, so anybody can put in the information. But if the person who's inputting the information puts in their cellphone number or an email address, which is saved as private, we never see that. So it is anonymous, it's more protected, so that information never comes to us. But if they put that in there, it does allow for back and forth communication through the tool. So we get that quick information, so we can react to it, especially in cases of bullying and harassment and such. Even similar to Thought Exchange, you can select different languages. So you can input in your native language, it'll translate back to English for us as we're looking at it. And again, safety and security are kind of the main points with that. So again, on June 17th, this was approved for purchase. We just finally got the app up and running. One of the things we want to focus on is having a good process and procedure in place so that we, you don't want to do this, you know, you want to do this all the way. We want to make sure you have a set policy and procedure in place for our staff who are going to be manning this and then so we can evaluate as we go forward. We're focusing on the high school and the middle school to begin with, as those seems to be higher areas of concern before rolling out to the rest of the district. So we have the app created, the site is accessible to us. We started meeting with the building principals at the high school and middle school and we'll be meeting with their incident teams in the near future to kind of go through the processes and procedures with this, hoping to roll out the start of second semester. And then there's a big communication component to this. So there's a lot of resources already provided to us. We'll look at what else we need to create. So this is adequately communicated to the public, to students, to parents, just about how to get to this tool, what's the purpose of this tool, how we'll use this tool. So this kind of just give you an update to where that is because this was some purchase in the summer. One of those kind of batons I've had carry on in my new role, making sure we get this put in place and get this done.
What questions do you have for Patrick?
Who monitors this from a staff standpoint?
So both the high school and the middle school have identified there are people who are going to be part of this and it's based on the different incidents that determine who gets that information. So we can say for bullying, that that information should be going towards principals, that that information should be going to maybe counselors, all depend on inside the building. And so at the high school, you have the building principals, you have the counselors, you have the school nurse, you have the student family advocates. Those are all people who are on that list who will get information based on which type of incident is reported, similar at the middle school. So pretty much as you're pulling through, so I'm going to go full screen real quick. This is actually what our site looks like. Again, we're still playing with that, keep testing it out and I have to tell people, hey, you're going to get alerted because as somebody on the incident team, I get alerted either through email or my cellphone, depending on which I set it up as. And pretty much you select who you are. So Kyle, I'm in here, student, parent, staff, community, security personnel administrator. And then you select your school. And then it will populate with the type of incidents that we have. So typically you have secondary incidents and then we'll have a different incident list for the elementary schools once we roll that out. And so we have, again, our focus on safety and security. So, you know, if I pick bullying, I then could select the location where was this happening. So this would be great data for us down the road too because we can go back and see charts showing us the different types of incidents, different locations, we can see how often. And then here's where they place the information. And they even have to have images or video, they can add that too. The next page actually is where you put in your, it tells you you can put in your phone number or email address if you want that two-way communication. If you don't, you just click submit and that's it. And then the alert goes out to the different people based on what you selected. So the high school and bullying here will determine which people will get that.
So I'm looking at the top line there that this will be only, and I'm understanding that this is a school resource, so it will be managed during the school day. But I also noticed under the incident type, there is one on suicide or thoughts of harming yourself. Are there any, you know, we only have so much we can do, but yet that makes me concerned if somebody looked at this as a way to reach out. Are there any other districts that have worked through that? Or are we just making sure that we're really communicating to our students this is just seven to five?
We're going to try to really communicate that because, again, some people working on this may not have access to this outside the school hours. But we want to also put it up. This page here can be, still be modified, that's something we're looking at. What other information do we want there for students? So if we need more information related to suicidal prevention, we can easily put that on this page. But I think a big part of that is communicating that we're going to be monitoring this closely during this time, trying to follow up as quickly as we can. But if you submit like email at 8:00 AM for bullying, you know, the people who are looking at that may be busy at that time, so there still is going to be a delay before we can act on anything. This is just giving us another way to get the information because even right now, a student could email us at any time or send something in. And so we're trying to have a better avenue for that. So where the higher risk or the higher priority ones will go straight to building administrators who have district-provided cellphones or, you know, kind of more of an expectation if they're available for that. But that's something we're still working through the policy procedures because it involves people on the incident scenes along with that before we communicate that out.
I would just maybe reaching out if there's community hotlines, that if there's additional information, if we only get one chance, but they could see that, you know, for some, if someone's in a point of crisis, calling 911 or this may be, but is there a middle ground in there that there's a hotline? And I trust that you all can navigate the community services, that maybe there would be another line that we could put in there that would be a, definitely. Any questions for Patrick?
I don't necessarily have a question for Patrick. It's not necessarily a question, it's just a comment. At the Iowa School Conference, Association Conference, I attended this workshop on, it was a panel of students and it was a group of LGBTQIA students and they were mentioning that, that at some point they're reporting, you can report it as much as you want, but if there's no resolution. So it's just a comment for us that we can give them all kinds of tools, but if we won't resolve them. So I like the use of the policies and procedures because I think that's an important piece because if we're not resolving the issues, there's the reporting. And they, that's what they said, they said, we don't report it because it's not resolved. So it's just a comment for us as a district to address that piece too.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for keeping us updated on this, Patrick. I really appreciate, I think we all appreciate that you're helping to carry the baton in this part of the process, so thank you. Are there any comments from the public on the anonymous alerts update? You may go ahead and come up to the microphone if you'd like to speak. Yep, and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Oh, we am a Jack, 409 Beetle Drive, going back to holding someone accountable. This new resource, the evaluation, to evaluate someone after a while, who are we going to hold accountable if this fails? One, are we going to evaluate the person who is in charge of this program every few months or now? After the data that just came out, obviously, we need to hold someone accountable to everything that goes on in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? All right, we will go ahead and move to the next item, the Ames High Chromebook Pilot Update. Patrick is back up again.
I just kind of put all my things together, just to make it easier for you guys. Again, kind of another update on this. This is something that was kind of kick-started back in the spring. This is just kind of leading to where we're going to go with this. So just a quick refresher, the Ames High School one-to-one device refresh was pushed back to next fall from where it should have been this fall originally when we were working on a three-year plan due to budget concerns and also to look at the technology available. Because this is year seven of the one-to-one initiative at the high school. We've had MacBook Airs 11-inch for every year of that. However, Apple no longer sells the 11-inch MacBook Air. They're moving away from that. Along with that, we are a Chromebook district kindergarten through eighth grade. So we started looking at Chromebooks then for the high school and that's kind of looking at how the technology is changing because the Chromebooks are getting much more powerful and there's other resources available for this. And so the pilot was originally discussed by the district tech committee back in the spring. I think it was in April. I did have the exact date written down if we needed that. But just kind of we're a bit up to this point now, we're still looking, moving forward with this. The purpose of this is to check the alignment of curriculum and teaching with the Chromebook device. Does the device fit our needs? Or how does it need to be modified in order to fit the needs in the classroom? We have programs like AWS AppStream, which is Amazon Web Services AppStream, which can allow us to run certain programs that otherwise would not run on a Chromebook, such as Photoshop, AutoCAD, something like that. It pretty much runs in a virtual environment. So you're sending data back and forth to another server somewhere, which is going to run that program for you. So we're looking at, there are some programs that some of our classes at the high school, they require something like Photoshop currently. So to keep that as a possibility, we need to find a way to still be able to do that. We also have other programs available that are kind of the alternatives which are available, which we'll be using in other parts of the district. So moving from iMovie to WeVideo, moving from GarageBand to Soundtrack. And these are both programs that are very powerful and still accessible on a Chromebook. But the big part of why we're doing this is to identify any gaps that we may have before we get to the point we have to purchase a new device for the high school. So we have, and because of our suffering, I forgot the word. So we have, and because of our suffering, I forgot to bring my device with me. It's Acer convertible Chromebooks, this is actually kind of the updated version of what we have at the middle school. It's a touchscreen tablet that flips into tablet mode, actually has a stylus built into it. The middle school Chromebooks came with a stylus, but nowhere to put it. So those weren't really handed out to kids because we figured they'd just disappear. This one is built into the device, so hopefully there's a greater chance of it staying there. It's actually using Wacom technology, which means that it's a very accurate stylus for Chromebooks, so you can do some drawing on it using it as your input device. We're going to identify some student volunteers who have varying curriculum needs. Again, we'll be focusing on somebody, at least a couple people who need Photoshop or some program like that, so that we can be testing out our AWS program, so we can test out all the features of that. A big part of this is getting feedback, feedback from the students, feedback from teachers, looking at then what do we need to find in a device, what do we need to find in these programs to support this? In terms of AWS, we're not the only district looking at this, or a lot of districts already have this put in place. So having a feedback from them about what's working, what's not working, hopefully we can find ourselves a better solution for that. The AWS is something that was, again, started and the training happened before I came on board, so we're having to redo some of that. And that's kind of hopefully when next week I get some time to get that put in place so that we are kind of looking at doing this after winter break. So already knew, were there obstacles moved to Chromebooks? Again, is our curriculum going to be an obstacle to this? Is that something then that's going to stop us? What about our current classroom practices? Can they be modified? Can they be changed? And then the device itself. While we did get, the reasons for these Chromebooks to be our kind of pilot ones is because we already pretty much knew them. We knew how to fix them, they're just a modified form of it, but they still have things like four gigabytes of RAM. So is four gigabytes RAM going to be enough to, we need eight gigabytes? That's going to allow you to do a little bit more, a little more quickly because the high school need is different than the elementary need with the device. And so, I was actually supposed to do this in November, but good thing because we kind of got pushed back a little bit. But we're going to look at getting the devices in students' hands right when we get back from winter break, start collecting feedback right away, hopefully by March, by spring break that we've got enough feedback in order to make decisions so we know what we need to look at next fall, well, we have to buy in the summertime, but what we need moving forward.
So when would you need to purchase these machines by?
Well, probably would wait to next fiscal year, so July 1st, and then we get them in. But we are also looking at, we have to refresh the elementary Chromebooks. That's a little bit less of a process there because we've been using Chromebooks at the elementary level, so K5, those are more looking at what do we need to update with those too. So we have a few Chromebooks we'll be buying over the summer.
Any questions, were you finished? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes, okay, any questions for Patrick?
Have you done any testing with the AWS to see how well it works for like Photoshop?
So there was some testing done before I was brought on board and I've had a little bit of time play with it. Then we had to move everything to a new system in order to pay for it, to manage it. And so now we're having to reset up some stuff, so that's kind of what I'm hoping to do before winter break or over winter break, just to make sure we have that in place. But it was working well and some districts have been able to run like Microsoft Office in there for, since we're testing and that, they've been able to run pretty much full programs in it. So pretty much it's almost having a virtual PC environment. Not all programs work, but that's what we're going to kind of try to figure out. And like I said, there are a lot of other districts that are using this or similar program, so they're providing a lot of feedback as we go forward.
Any other questions? Thank you for the information, Patrick. Any comments from the public on the Ames High Chromebook Pilot Update? Come on up. State your name and school if you're a student, please.
Simeon Stewart, Ames High. So the school board, the school district has a PSEO program with, with working with Iowa State. And some of those programs require like computers that can run Java or other programs with the virtual machine, be able to do that or would they be on their own?
I don't know, but we will make sure that our staff member, Patrick, follows up with you to answer that question. How's that sound? Thank you very much.
He should have a mic there.
I was really hoping a student would ask a question or give a comment, so thank you. We have so many of you here tonight, so. Any other comments or questions from anyone in the audience? All right, we will go ahead and move to the Board Committee Update. Is there anything, anybody needs to highlight? I don't believe we've had, I don't think we have, no. We have not had any committee meetings yet. Our work session following this meeting tonight is actually to take all of us as a new board and to identify those priorities within those committees and, and identify our membership. So we will not have a report tonight, but I did want to thank JD because I noticed in our Board Committee Update forum, format that you have added our additional responsibilities in there. And thank you because we do have five committees, but we also have additional responsibilities that we will be reporting back to, to one another as we go and, and attend some meetings. So any comments from the public on Board Committee Update? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to Policies for Discussion.
I think the, the policies for discussion this time very much are related to some HR feedback we had, so I think I'll let Superintendent Reisner talk to those.
Sure. The first one, the Equal Education Opportunity, that one just needed, yearly we update the names of our compliance people. So those are the changes that you'll see on that, just updating the names. The next one, oh, sorry, any questions on that? All right. The next one, the Service Animal one, this was a language change from our HR Director, the Assistance Animal, updating that to be in accordance with a, a new code in Iowa, so calling it Service Animal versus Assistance Animal. And then the next one, again, this one is also just updating the name of the Director of Equity, pretty much that last paragraph, or second to the last paragraph at the bottom, and then providing the address and phone number.
So no content changes in these, just one language change to better meet code and updating some contact information.
Exactly.
So. Any questions for Policy Committee or Superintendent Reisner? Any questions or comments from the public on these three policies? Seeing none, we will bring those back at the next meeting for, as an action item. The next item is the District Calendar.
The District Calendar that you will see attached, we had our administrative team, our principals, and then the Teachers Union take a look at that. Really, the only choice we have is, as you know, the Iowa code dictates when we start, so we can't start before the 23rd. This year, the 23rd fell on a Sunday, so the question was, do we start on a Monday or do we start on a Wednesday? We let the, we, we put both of those out there, we let the Teachers Union take a look at that and then discussed it during one of our cabinet meetings with the Teachers Union. And it came back that looking at starting the Wednesday gives students and teachers the first week to kind of have those first two days to prep for students and then the students have a gradual start. Also, as you remember, last year we had sixth grade transition and ninth grade transition, so that will give us the day before school starts to do that rather than having that on a Friday or a Monday.
Any questions or comments? The only thing I was going to, I am assuming this is a clerical thing that as this comes, then more of the stuff from the right gets filtered into the left with the different notations, a circle, a triangle and, and so forth. So what is boxed on the left-hand side on the numbers are all district days off or in services. The high school, middle school professional development isn't on the left yet as an example.
Correct.
I would just want to comment and thank the district staff at the high school and middle school for the orientation day. I continue to hear great things about that and I think that's really helping the students to make that transition and get better acquainted with the schools.
Any other comments, questions?
I don't know if we had this before, but I like the addition of the quarterly statistical reporting periods. I, I really like that. That makes it very clear how many days the kids, they're, they're being in it. I, I really like that addition. Thank you.
Anything else? Any comments or questions from the public regarding the 2020-21 District Calendar? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to the Public Forum. And just as a reminder, we had some not fill out your address. If you will please make sure when you come up and clearly state your address, we are, we are required to put it into our minutes, so we would appreciate that. So Angela Shaw.
What you didn't read, still.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Angela Shaw, I live at 5411 Tennessee Street here in Ames and I'm speaking on behalf of the Ames Youth and School Action Team, also known as ASAT. ASAT was established in January 2017 in a community response to the racial and ethnic disparities that we were seeing in the school district. Since then, we have witnessed the Ames School District go from no action to tons of action. And today we would like to say thank you. To put the quote best, James W. Witt says, "Don't tell me what your priorities are. Show me where you spend your money and I'll tell you what they are." So today Ames has put things to action and what have we seen? We've seen the hiring of Dr. Swellwell and, and Dr. Spikes to do critical consciousness training for the past three years, which has required building goals surrounding curriculum, discipline and policies. We've seen goals put in place for the Student Improvement Advisory Committee as well as we saw a task force being developed by the Equity Committee that resulted in a report in, in December 2018. In addition, we saw in November 2018 that the priority number one was put on the wall for equity as for education improvement. So today, in addition to that, we've seen things like the hiring of an Equity Director, we've seen the hiring of the Executive Director of Elementary Education, and we saw the rollout of a new disciplinary program. We now see community listening sessions as well as most recently, we see the Equity Audit for the middle school and high school. What we know is that all of these actions take place because of you. And it has taken courage as well as vulnerability for the Ames School District to pull up their rug and look at the data and say that we are currently not teaching our students equally. There is inequities in every part of this district. And by you making these money and people decisions as well as now putting accountability into place, you are saying that we no longer will sweep these things under the rug, that we do not care when people are uncomfortable, when they want their kids for it to remain because they're benefiting from this. And you want that, you want the statement to be known that all students should be educated in this district. So on behalf of ASAT, we really want to say thank you for putting your money where your mouth is and we look forward and we will be watching, because you know we will be watching, to see how you turn all of these positions that have been hired, all of these SMART goals into action.
Thank you. Edna Clinton.
Sorry, I have to follow. I am Edna Young Clinton, currently the President of the Ames Branch of the NAACP. Superintendent Reisner, School Board Directors. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, herafter known as the NAACP, has a long history as a proponent of educational equity. Per the NAACP's Educational Game Changer Initiative, the organization is dedicated to eliminating severe racial inequities that continue to plague our educational system. It is not our, it is our ultimate goal that every student of color receive a quality public education that prepares him or her to be a contributing member of our democracy. It is no secret that the students of color, specifically African-Americans and Latinx youth in the Ames Community School District are not experiencing equitable educational outcomes. We know that the research indicates that these educational disparities can be addressed as school districts work to create cultures that address the roadblocks to equity. We commend the School Board for the commitment to equity and access as stated in your purpose and priorities. And we commend the District for committing to instituting critical conscious initiatives, including the training conducted by Dr. Spike and Swellwell. We encourage the District to stay on this course without fear of pushback and allocate the resources necessary to implement equity initiatives with integrity, fidelity, and ensure accountability district-wide. On behalf of the Ames Branch of the NAACP, we offer our continued support to the Ames Community School District as it does this important work of ensuring equitable educational outcomes for all youth in this district because every student is important. Thank you.
Thanks, Edna. Joe Wyers?
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, honorary Board Members. My name is Joe Wyers from 1210 28th Street here in Ames. As posted on the agenda on the wall in this room and in many other district publications, there are five of these priorities over the past few weeks. I've observed concerns directly with three of these five and they could be argued to be four of them. It's for this, this reason I'm here tonight to share with you those concerns and provide recommendations. Priority number three reads recruitment, retention, development of high-quality staff. I'd like to ask you as the School Board to include educational assistance in recess teachers within that umbrella of this priority and raise the wages of these professionals to something more just. Current job opening for this position has a maximum of earning only $210 a week and yet this is when the children are most vulnerable and at risk of significant injuries, both physically due to the running around, but also mentally, emotionally due to the opportunities for bullying. My hope is that a more just wage will help recruit, recruit and retain as well as develop long-term quality recess teachers who are able to form bonds with the youth over their six years in elementary school. Theoretically, for any student here in K through 12, 12th grade, no other individuals will have more direct supervision than our recess teachers over their entire time in Ames Schools. Priority number four reads clear and consistent communication to support positive and proactive community relationships. I'd like to request the School Board to adopt a policy for school leadership to follow regarding parental notification and that if a child is forced to, say, recess and/or is forced to sign any document that is meant to be used for behavioral modifications, that a parent is to be notified minimally prior to the end of the day, but preferably for any meeting with that student as school leadership occurs. Priority number five, a safe and responsive system that promotes the mental health and well-being of every individual. In addition to the request to consider an increase in base cost for recess teachers or educational assistance, I request that guidelines are established for schools that define a mandatory adult-to-student ratio for proper supervision. My request is that the supervision of this unstructured time at least, is at least equivalent to the ratio inside the building during the structured instructional time. I'd also like to request that a formal document be drafted for any incident of, of a physical altercation, whether intentional or not, and whether there is noticeable injury or not. The schools must complete and maintain for appropriate record-keeping if they are made aware of the situation. The incident that occurred, leading to me being here, resulted in a broken bone of a child who most likely blacked out, was supposedly kicked while passed out by other students, took several minutes before a teacher was able to assist him, eventually had a teacher carry him without first stabilizing the injured appendage, and there is no official written record of what happened besides the nurse's incident, incident or accident report, which is minimal detail. Final in relation to priority five, but also the district's full purpose, I would like to express an additional concern. like to express an additional concern. I meant not having a recommendation, or good idea to discuss, but share it for your own consideration. I believe it is interesting that the word usage in the purpose in priority five is every individual and not every student. As I have spoken with several teachers and parents, I am greatly disturbed as to how many feel that neither students or teachers are truly safe, and how their mental health or well-being is being ignored. I request that the policy of room clear is reconsidered, as I fear that mentally they have a negative effect on the entire classroom. The teacher, and most of all, the student, is designed to assist. I further fear that due to some of these safety concerns, not just students, but also teachers are not able to access their full personal teaching potential. All these requests stem from several issues that have risen or been brought to my attention in recent weeks. If you'd like, I could go in more detail regarding, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Caitlin Troutman.
I'm Caitlin Troutman, and I work at Sawyer Elementary. Ames Community School District School Board. As teachers, families, community members, and/or stakeholders connected to the Ames Community School District, we actively support the critical consciousness work that is taking place in this district. We understand that when initiatives which challenge the status quo are put forth, there will be pushback and fear. No matter what, critical consciousness must be developed in all leaders, faculty, and staff in Ames Community School District, and must remain the number-one priority of the district. We thank you for your dedication to our students. What is most clear is that by prioritizing equity and justice, every student will have the opportunity to access all that ACSD has to offer. Stay the course. With dedicated support, Chaz Ingelkes, Hilda McCory, Jennifer Hagland, Swale Bahamadi, Robin Reister, Christina Pardo Ballister, Andrea Delman, Albert Van Gielen, Clarice Egert, Melissa Mae Maxey, Leanne Warburg Johnson, Kelly Morkin, Melissa Stone, Adam Stone, Vicki Barr, Carrie Deal, Caitlin Troutman, Jessica Sidler, John Sidler, Sue Lawler, Stephen Krugler, Laura Ballantyne, Heather Forkner, Karen Klotzbach, Steve Flynn, Molly Vanoy, Deborah Flynn, Tabitha Wu, Riley Drake, Corey Carroll, Michelle Rist, Molly Kahler, Jenya Coffey, Dan Coffey, Elliott Coffey, Hannah Hanover, Nathan Hanover, Caitlin Berry, Audra Watson, Ross Wilburn, Amy Ruttenberg, Anita Rollins, L. Wesley Harris Jr., Akaylo Harris, Jeremy Best, Stephanie Shares, Eric Shares, Rachel Crofta, Eric Crofta, Kate Ogden, Ellen Grimm, Jane Grimm, Vashelese Kaba, Ashraf Kaba, Jessica Adams, Stephanie Sol, Angie Miller, Brad Dell, Natalie Stowe, Jonas Michael, Nicole Coronado, Erin Miller, Jeremy Knutson, Jessamine McKinney, Jerem McKinney, Aurelia McKinney, Gabrielle Smith, Jalisa Swain, Eric Ringsby, Benjamin Gleason, Nina Gregory, Whitney Judas, Mary Morton, Jeremy Bush, Jen Voklander, Simone Whitfield, Randy Whitfield, Mindy Hagan, Brian Hagan, Kathy Hansen, Shaila Santiago, Stephanie Myers, Andy Myers, Anna Fagervik, Ricardo Martinez, Jordan Terry, Amber Franzine, Nicole Coons, Mandy Fagelland, Mike Fagelland, Maria El Espino, Brian D. Lee, Tyler McCabe, Brianna Van Dyke, Jill Gale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Ogden.
Good evening. My name is Kate Ogden, and I work at Kate Mitchell Elementary. And I will continue with names of those in support. Ruth Appleton, Jean Muhammad Abdullah Muhammad, Keen Roberts, Fred Lloyd, Sharon Slinger, Roxanda Luft, June Andreas, Sarah Davidson, Amy Erica Smith, Tibby Chelsea, Leith Door, Lori Olson, Carrie Smith, David Stovall, Diana McHenry, Steve Roger Smith, Chris Reel, Ashley Morgan, Tracy Reel, Don Grimes, Chris Grimes, Harold Door, Lou Olson, Carrie Dodgett Camnich, Alicia Store, Sherri Davis, Sanford Davis, Randy Camp, Noah Camp, Crystal Stone, Kristy Fick, Christopher W. Chase, Jim Kopik, Tanvi Rasagi, Zara Choth the Free, Alicia Martin, Chad Schonweiler, Angie D. Ward, Deborah Smith Ford, Lindsay Muller, Adam Muller, Mulyam Far, Gillian Aukun, KB Guabu, Julia Guabu, Andra Castle, Noreen Rodriguez, Amanda Hardy Hillman, Naya Mortra, Ann Brenneman, Lori Sulzberger, Amanda Peetfisch Shrag, Ben Shrag, Deanie Thomas, Dee Hopkey, Kathy Slade, Jen Shares, Carol Hair, Christine Shields, Michelle Yobares Rojas, Emily Tyndall, Pastor Eileen Gebby, Robin Chanel, Megan Gilligan, Anek Mundal, Kristen Jensen, Liz Mullen, Tina Knight, Lori Oak, Jess Lancel, Max Viatori, Kristy Campan, Paul Gorski, Beth Wessel Crochell, Barb Wenzel Fisher, Nicole Drake Strabala, Amy Papion, Allison Brundy, Colin Reichart, Kate Ingelkes, Jeff Anderson, Nancy Gebhardt, Bree Han Jaroman, Claudia Penya, Elaine O'Neil, Jen Sarah, Andrew Lucchesi, Scott Ricks, Brian Benkin, Rodrigo Palosla Ortiz, Julie Ghul, Kimberly Hope, Anne Fogan, Rosie Perez, Kristy Oxendine, Elizabeth Martinez Podolsky, Joseph Podolsky, Jean Marie Conley, Tim Gossett, Audrey Canice, Alyssa Leader, Jordan Brooks, Carmen Flagg, Jessamine Heisman, Don Andrews, Joanne Marshall, Frank Poduska, Mike Sulzberger, Justin Macy, Tiffany Antone, Kason Murphy.
Jenya.
I'm Jenya Coffey. I work at Ames Middle School, and I'm going to round out the end of the list. Jessica Fears, Tia Leif, Amanda Malaski, Barbara Fears, Sam Schonweiler, Seth Schonweiler, Kathy Schonweiler, Kelly Schaefer, Deirdre Hemphwelen, Mark Beck, Nancy Evans, Jason Paul, Danielle Manna, Brenda Allen, Paul Hangsteg, Jacob Battoon, Jim Trendberth, Brett Steelman, Michelle Applegate, Brent Brinkmeyer, Ikenna Nilebidum, Lilian Dee Dee Leddyum, Colleen Bivens, Reed Wu, Katie Paget Walsh, Colin Paget Walsh, Kristy Mixdorf, Lena LaSalle, Kristen Barber, Chad Dumis, Jeff Hawkins, Anthony Jones, and Justin Jeffs. Thank you. And we have a copy to leave with us.
Thank you. Catherine Fromm.
Hi, Catherine Barbara Fromm. I've been around this district a long time. My four children went to Ames High School. My oldest child is a genius. My oldest grandchild has autism, so I'm concerned about the disability recommendations. Thirty years ago, Edna Clinton and I addressed the board on this same subject. Here we are, and I don't know what we've really solved in the meantime. And I'm not going to thank you, because I think if you were in this three-years equity study, there are some things that could have been done in the meantime. I have kept the faith. I have lived here in a very complacent, smug town that is rather proud of the way it is. I didn't live here very comfortably, because I'm a bit of a '60s child. I'm one of the few people around that Sal Malcolm X in his prime as a student at UCLA. And I firmly believe in the things we have tried to do. I went to a concert that my grandchildren were in at West Des Moines High School. And women go and count the women in the orchestra when it comes, right, or an orchestra, or we count the minorities. And the women, the chorus performance at West Des Moines had a significant number of African-Americans, and I counted them, okay? And I did talk to the people about it. If you were conducting an equity study, I don't see any reason why in the meantime you couldn't have done something about the music program. Where did we get the instruments from? We don't have enough instruments. We don't have enough money for instruments. I know what the situation is, and I don't think it's improved in the 30 years that we've messed around with topics like this. And we now have a demographic change in the district, which requires more effort than we have had in the past. I was on the At-Risk Committee for years with Clemmie Jackson, and we advocated for an alternative school. And we don't have an alternative school. There are about 175 in the alternative school in Iowa City. There's Scavo Campus in Des Moines. Cedar Rapids has 600. I once did a project on this with students, and I did teach at Iowa State. So I expect more out of this district. And I think you all ran for the board. No one coerced you to be on it, and you better be on some committees. There should be a music committee to see what we can do. And I would insist on being on it, only I spend my winters in California with no apologies. It's time for this district to get moving on these topics. Three years is a long time to have had a study. And I'm not sorry. I voted against the high school. And subsequently, we had students that went to North High School and made African-American pejorative remarks, and then went to Marshalltown, where there were Latino-Mexican girls. And I know a lot about this. I am from Escondido, California. These brats need to be schooled. Their parents need to be told that we don't have children behave like this at this high school. And you all can get on committees and get some things done, and I'll enjoy California. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fromm. Andrew Murdock.
Shoot, they're all leaving, and I was just going to... This was going to be...
Don't take it personally. It's high school government.
My name is Andrew Murdock, 6415 510th Avenue. Before I start, I want to thank all of the people that have come up to speak and all the students that were here, because you've got to be pretty brave to get up here and speak. It's a little scary, you don't know anybody. Also want to thank the board. I've been listening to a lot of podcasts on how to be a good parent, and it says you need to become active and start talking to board members and join the school board. So thank you for doing that. Today I'm here, I'm with the Boys and Girls Club of Story County. I'm on the board. Erica here, she's the CEO. We've been working a little bit. We work with so many of the students from Ames School District that we figured we should start forming a bit of a relationship. So just wanted to give you some facts about the Boys and Girls Club. We serve school-aged youth, six-years-old to seniors in high school. Our 15,000-square-foot facility in Ames boasts a full-size gym, a learning center, teen room, technology room, and games room. In addition to youth development programs, we serve a hot, healthy meal every day. Last year, we operated close to capacity each day, serving an average of 117 youth daily in our Ames clubhouse. Some fun facts, 72% of our members are Ames School District students. Last year, 57% of the Ames students that go to our club were youth of color. 43% of Ames School District student members were eligible for free and reduced lunch. In 2018, we served 23,000 meals and snacks. Some programs we offer are STEM Club with ISU Extension, Science Club, Let's Cook Cooking Club, Taekwondo, Power Hour tutoring and homework assistance, financial literacy, and Career Camp, where we do career exploration and job skills development for college credit. It only costs a member $25 a year to go to the club. For the summer, it's $50, so $75 for the entire year. So I just wanted to thank you for your time again. And again, thank you for all you do. It's sometimes a thankless job, but you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you very much. All right. We will go ahead and move, pardon me, to consent items, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Benkin, seconded by Beerbaum. Gifts to the District, Cornerstone Church, Renewable Energy Group, Wilson Toyota, Great Western Bank, Ames Ford Lincoln, Kate Mitchell PTA, Kristy Minion. It's been moved by Benkin, seconded by Beerbaum to accept the consent items. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven-zero. First item is the resolution approving the Revenue Purpose Statement ordering an election.
I move the board approve the resolution approving Revenue Purpose Statement ordering an election on a Revenue Purpose Statement to authorize expenditures from the revenue received from the state Secure and Advanced Vision for Education Fund, and ordering the publication of a notice of election.
Second.
It's been moved by Perez, seconded by Benkin. Discussion. As you recall from our last meeting, this is just the next step in that process to move towards a march vote on approving a Revenue Purpose Statement. No discussion. We will go ahead and vote on roll call.
Colton, aye.
Perez, aye.
Benkin, aye.
Beerbaum, aye.
Franzin, aye.
Shields Cook, aye.
Len Kaidas, aye.
Passes seven-zero. Thank you. The next item, the request to the School Budget Review Committee for Modified allowable Growth for Increasing Enrollment and Limited English Proficiency Instruction Beyond Five Years.
I move to approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee for Modified allowable growth for increasing enrollment of $647,280 and limited English proficiency instruction beyond five years in the amount of $44,404.80.
Second.
Moved by Beerbaum, seconded by Colton. Discussion. Chris, do you want to give a quick sentence of what we're doing here, please?
So one of the big tenants of Iowa school finance is that you not only have to have money to spend, you have to have authority to spend that money. So there are certain times during the year where we have the opportunity to get additional spending authority, increased enrollment, limited English proficiency. We did the excess ESL costs a month or so ago. We did the special ed deficit after the car was done in September. So those are all, in those cases, those were monies we had already spent, and we're asking for the authority for money we had spent. In this case, it will be for expenses that we incur because of our increased enrollment and the limited English proficiency. The DE requires board action on this. We send our minutes to them. They take a class action, what they call class action, item to the School Budget Review Committee, and they approve all the school districts at once. It's automatically determined by our October 1st certified enrollment, so I don't have much influence on it.
Yep. Then moved by Beerbaum, seconded by Colton. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven-zero. Sorry, 2020-2021 board meeting schedule.
I move the board approve the 2020-21 board meeting schedule as presented. Second.
Moved by Benkin, seconded by Perez. Discussion.
One thing I noticed when looking through it, it looks like we have a lot of meetings scheduled in July and August, which I think, I think this is really copying what we had done this last year. But if I remember right, we did that because of the high school and because of some things we needed to get approved. So I would suggest we definitely eliminate the August 3rd meeting, because we know that tends to be a time period when people tend to be gone. I think in years past, maybe we'd only done two meetings in July, but that's really up to everybody else. I think... that's really up to everybody else. I think July and August looks heavy here. I think the rest of them, it's our standard rhythm.
Yeah, I recall we had to add, I think we had a special meeting. There was something going on and we needed extra meetings. So I would...
So I guess as a suggestion, I would say that I love the idea of July 13th for being the retreat work session. I'm wondering if maybe we recommend Superintendent Reisner choose between the 6th and the 20th, which one, maybe get rid of one of those. Like the 6th seems reasonable, given it's so close to the 4th. And then probably August 3rd, I would recommend we don't do as well unless there's a specific reason. That way, we kind of have two meetings each month throughout.
I would be in support of that. I know a lot of people go on vacation the very beginning of August, right before school starts.
So, I didn't write that, but I need a...
I move we amend...
We've got a motion, so we need an amendment.
Yeah, I move we amend this to remove the July 6th and August 3rd meetings.
Second.
Okay, it's been amended by Beerbaum and seconded by Colton to remove July 6th and August 3rd. Discussion on the amendment.
I guess I'm just wondering if it makes sense to keep them because we needed them. There was a reason we needed them. And I'm wondering if it just makes sense to keep them on the schedule so that we have our time set and then just not have them if we don't need them? Or should we just get rid of them? I'm open. I'm just, I'm just thinking.
I'm thinking a little bit about staff of the district because if that's a time period, we know that those are in time periods that staff tend to take vacation. I would rather let them know ahead of time that we don't expect that they'll be needed that week. And then we can always, like we did last year, add another one if we need to, if we have something come up.
Thoughts from you, Superintendent Reisner?
I can't remember why we have those...
The July one, I remember, remember, we had to, it had to do with the high school. It was the phase two approving the documents.
Was that for...
Jerry's giving me a thumbs up. Yes, I remembered it.
I, I'm great not, of course, July is a month that most of our administrators take any vacation days. The majority take them in July. August 3rd, the only reason that I could see having it is because it can be a big hiring time for us. So sometimes to get those approvals, contract approvals, it's time sensitive at times. So that would be the reason I would say the August 3rd one could stay on there, but...
You know, I want to say that the July one was because of bonds, trying to get stuff voted in for bonds for the high school.
It was for the high school. Yeah, it was. So we, another option would be, we have an amendment on the table, the docket. We could also table it until the next meeting if we want to take some time to have some more discussions, too. I'm not making that motion because I can't, but I'm just suggesting.
I move we, I move we table this discussion until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved by Beerbaum, seconded by Perez to table. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Did I follow my parliamentary procedure, Chris? All righty, great. Moving on to the next item, new Ames High School change order number two.
I move the board approve change order number two to construct Inc. in the amount of $5,528 for bid package number 31-1 site development for the new high school project.
Second.
Moved by Perez, seconded by Colton. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. Thank you. Items from the board.
I have something. I would like to comment on an anonymous letter we received from a worried parent. The parent mentioned several situations that they say happen in all of our schools. I question these facts unless they have witnessed this behavior firsthand in the schools mentioned, considering I know that our superintendent has been spending entire days in the elementary schools, visiting classrooms, and observing situations. I invite you to help every child be the best they can be instead of calling some of them troublemakers. I urge you to volunteer and see what our staff does firsthand. Perhaps if you walk a mile in their shoes, you will not be so quick to condemn the staff working so hard to keep your children progressive, progressing towards being functional and successful adults.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I'd also like to make a comment, just real briefly, to our, our staff and to our community. As Director Perez said, the several people in the district and the community did receive an anonymous letter. We've received letters like this before. They're very hurtful. They're usually very hateful. It's very painful. And so I just want to commend the community that showed up tonight to support the work that we do to make sure that every child receives a good education. I appreciate the boldness and the courage that it takes to put your face to your words, you know, to put your name to your words. And I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for supporting us in this very important work.
Any other comments from board members? All right, items from the superintendent.
Just a quick update. I don't, Jerry, you can do this or I can, either or. I'll just go ahead. Next week, Jerry will be updating the Facilities Committee regarding the progress on cost estimates and planning for the Mitchell addition and renovation. So approval to the bid, or approval for the bid project will be requested at the board meeting January 13th. And then one of the things that I wanted to make sure you were aware of was the administrative rules. When we have new policies and then we go back and we establish those administrative rules, I, those are on this, on this superintendent's update. Moving forward, I'll try to figure out a more efficient way to do that. But we have a board policy that asks for those to come to the board. That's not common, but I can certainly do that, or we can explore ways that we can make that more efficient. So those are attached. And then I was going to have Chris give just a brief update on the election costs.
If, as you recall, this was the first year that the school board, the county, and the city elections were combined into one in November instead of the school election being in its own separate election in September. There's been many changes over the years. We went from having it every September to every, every other, every other year, and then that was combined into November 1. The intention of the statute change from what everything we read and were told was that it was to increase participation in the school board election and reduce costs. The first intention was exceeded. The, the increase in voters for the school board increased by 41%. So that's very good for our democracy. We want a participatory electorate. However, I, I'm not sure what really happened with the, the cost of the election. I got the bill and literally almost fell out of my chair. In 2017, for the September election, we were charged $12,400 for that election, for that standalone election. And the bill for the 2019 election was $22,178. I don't believe we're alone in this concern. We actually received a survey from IASB today asking what the cost of our 2017 election and 2019 elections were and any, and the participation increase. After that, I did forward an email that I had sent to our elected legislators to IASB so they could see that I'd already expressed a concern on this. I understand that the jurisdictions share in the cost of the election, but what ended up happening was the city share of the bill went down $10,000 while ours went up $10,000. So I don't think that was the intent of the bill. I believe because of the number of precincts that Ames has, ours was more dramatic than other school districts around us. Plus, just the pure volume of how big we are. For instance, Gilbert's went up 14%, but it was $350. Nevada's went up 31% or $700. So the answer I got back from this, the county auditor, is because we only had eight voting centers for our election and we had 20 precincts, that the cost is much greater. Well, I agree with that. That would be the case. But the 20 precincts are because of the city election, not because of the school board election.
So this came up a couple weeks ago when I went to my Metro Superintendent's meeting. And at those Metro Superintendent's meetings, we have a representative from IASB. Sometimes we have a legislator, and then we also have SAI is there. And so at that point, I shared with them the concern that we had and the increase that we saw. And IASB had said they were going to follow up. So I really appreciate them doing that today. I received that survey and forwarded it on to Chris. So they were really timely in that, and I appreciate that. And then I had just two other updates, kind of timely. We have been in the discussion, I know I've shared it with the board throughout the last year and a half that I've been here, just exploring the option for an alternative school. We continue to have that discussion and move forward with just some initial visioning and, and planning around that and looking for options for a location. One of the things that I hear loud and clear from the community is the need to do some more intensive behavior management programs with students. And we agree, we're bound by the law. And so the law definitely is clear on what we can and can't do. So we have been sending a large number of students, I, I should correct that, not a large number of students, but we have been sending a number of students to Woodward Academy along with Beloit and, and doing some, some programs where we, we take the student out of the building. We do some alternative programming at a different location and other options. And what that, that's very costly, of course, and it's really not a comprehensive model. So we're really working to, how do we begin to have that alternative program that meets our students' needs, both with challenging behaviors and also students who the typical high school just doesn't meet the needs of their family? We have students that have to work and other things to support their families. And we hear those voices this, that we need a different option for those students. We also have students who attend net high. When our students attend net high, I don't have the exact number this year. It might be around 30 that we have attending net high. They, they're FTE, so the money that we gain from them goes to net high. So in a district our size, there, there is a legit need for some alternative programming. And we hear it, and we need to, we need to move forward with really considering that and bringing a plan forward for what that might look like. So just to let the board know, we're working on that and will continue. We had a great meeting, two great meetings today around that, and have reached out to some community members for location ideas, and we'll continue to explore what that would look like. And then in addition to that, tomorrow, I'll, I'm going to be going to the Capitol to have a meeting with Senator Sinclair. There are two potential bills that could be going forward that would limit our ability to do room clears. So room clears would not be legal anymore. In addition to that, there's also something that would prohibit us from, or make extreme, it already is pretty difficult to remove a child from the classroom, but this would make it even more difficult. So with both of those bills, they're kind of in conflict. And so I just reached out to her and shared some of my personal experiences in the last 28 years and talked to her about what the meaning of those in practice would really look like and asked if she'd be willing to just sit down, have coffee, and talk with me. And I just really appreciate her willingness. She responded back right away, said, "I would love to. This is a problem I want to fix." And, and so looking at how to fix that is important. I will tell you that it is not a problem that is only Ames. We, all of our schools in the area are experiencing the same struggles and across the nation. So my hope is that we are a very, I guess, a very dedicated and committed community, and we'll look at options that really make the best use of our staff and, and then serve our students to the greatest ability.
Thank you. Anything on the board planning calendar? I think the one thing I will highlight is that we do not have another board meeting until January 13th. So we go a little bit here with winter break, but we will all be together on the 13th of January is the next time we will be together. And then on the 27th, we will have a work session.
And that work session, just to remind you, is, will be the demographic report from the demographer around enrollment.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Benkin, seconded by Perez. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. We will reconvene in about five minutes and go into our last work session.